Welcome. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detschel.
Here.
Mr. Heether.
Here.
Mrs. Slattery.
Here.
Mark. Give me some paper. Thank you.
I'd like to start with our mission statement. The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we need a motion and a second to adopt our agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
So we'll start tonight with two presentations. The first one is the Butler Tech Precision Machining Program. We'll have Chris Trentman come up, our site supervisor for Butler Tech, and introduce the program.
Yes, so thank you. My name is Chris Trentman. Thanks for having us again. I just wanted to take this opportunity, about a month ago, Dave Fox and their Precision Machining Program had a, what he calls, a local competition, but it's way more than just a competition. There was well over 100 people that represented close to 75 different manufacturing companies throughout southwest Ohio that were there throughout the day. These companies interacted with the students, shared feedback, gave them, you know, some tips and interviewing help and did other things like that. And so it's just, I wanted to make sure that Dave was able to be recognized and have Dave come up and talk a little bit about what the program, what that day meant, and then also the kids want to come up and talk a little bit about themselves as well.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Dave Fox. I wrote down a few questions that I'm kind of asking myself just to explain a little bit about the competition. I think you guys know a lot about my program. I feel like it's been pretty successful over the years. We employ a lot of kids locally and we get a lot of major donations for this program, stuff like that. But the competition is huge. It's a lot of fun for me to organize and it's a lot of fun. A lot of companies come and help out. For instance, we had a company called Hubble. That is a worldwide company, electrical connectors. Just called up and said, "We'd like to buy lunch that day." So they donated $600 and bought us 100 three ways from Skyline. So, that, and we also had a company called Richards Industries. So we like to present some prizes for the kids. So they gave us four $100 Visa cards. So that was kind of nice for the winners. And of course, the biggest thing is we employ a lot of these kids due to this, so. So the first question I wrote to myself is, "Please give a little information about how the contests begin." A few years ago, there's always been a state competition for our kids, but we said, "Let's make it a little more interesting," and I like to show off their skills. So we started inviting employers, and it really started growing after that. Employers started seeing these kids. It's their opportunity to come in and actually watch them do the machining. It's not just sit there and, you know, "Hey, I'm telling you this kid is good." And they know what they're looking for, and they can come in and kind of find the right kids for their particular job that they're doing. So that's how that came about. Who participates in the competition? We have 25 seniors this year and 25 juniors, and we make them all. We don't make them, but, you know, we encourage them to really participate. A lot of the seniors say, "Oh, I already got a job. Why don't I want to do that?" But, you know, they got a chance to win the Visa cards and stuff like that. But we're really showing off the juniors, all the seniors, but four were employed last year and we're still working with them. Sometimes it's transportation and stuff like that causes a little bit of employment, but we can normally employ every single kid. Well, who attends the meeting? We have parents come in, and I have one of my favorite parents right over here, Mrs. Carti. Local businesses, of course, come in. I've seen some of my school administrators there, both Butler Tech and Northwest Local were there. We had, in the past, we've had politicians come in, we've had school admini-- I already said it. And we bring in a lot of the underclassmen. Kids that are on the bubble, like, "Hey, I don't know if I really want to do that machining class." They come in and they see these employers there and they say, "Ooh, there is a big interest in this." So those are the people that we like to invite to the competition. Chris had mentioned, we had all those guests there this year, and I think that's the biggest thing. Matter of fact, even with the people that showed up, I've had a bunch of employers calling me saying, "Did I have to be there to get, you know, have some of these kids sent out?" So I'm literally just sending kids out. I know most of these employers, but they couldn't make the competition, so we're sending them people anyway, just to interview. And most kids usually end up, I mean, I have some kids that'll get 10 interviews, but I won't let them take 10 interviews. We're usually limited to about three to five interviews, and they get a feel which company fits them best. These people also are sending people into my school to help teach, which is a big plus for me and a plus for them. They're sending these people, and they're getting to know these kids, you know, teaching them. I always say you should fire your machine shop teacher every five years because we start falling behind a little bit on technology. Well, they bring that technology back to us. So helps me stay current, too. But they're coming and teaching the latest techniques to these kids, and we have quite a few companies participating with the help teach, and it's been a big plus for me, too. Let's see here. Like I said, most of the kids, pretty much every kid, has an interview to go on. It's up to them to go ahead and seal the deal on the job, but most of them are, I mean, we've had probably 100 job offers for 25 kids this year. And I'm going to invite somebody that didn't get to participate in the competition, but I think she's an interesting case because she's only in my intro, so she couldn't participate in the competition, but she's a really strong student, and I want her to talk a little bit about her and my club that we had started. Christina Carti.
Hi, my name is Christina Carti. I am in Mr. Fox's Intro to Precision Machining class. My older brother actually took his class and graduated with a full-ride scholarship and a job straight out of high school. That's what really interested in me in taking his class. I also love to work with my hands and everything and do, I don't want a desk job. That doesn't interest me. But I'm also in his CNC club, which is where we work with Mastercam. Mastercam is a program where we design something on a computer, and then we can send it back for the machine to do it instead of us. So we can just sit back and watch it do all the work for us. In his class already, we've already worked with the manual mill, manual lathe, and CNC. We're also going to get to programming the CNC machines and then be able to run them ourselves.
I need you to tell them what you're designing right now.
Oh, in CNC club, we are actually designing a monopoly board. But it's not just any monopoly board, it's a monopoly board of our school with Butler Tech programs and their teachers, and it's including all of their programs that are offered at our school. Not all monopoly board is going to be the same, whether it includes the Butler Tech teachers or the rest of the teachers and administrators at the rest of our school.
Okay, awesome. So you're, next year, what are your plans?
I am a freshman, actually, in his interclass.
Awesome.
So your monopoly board, you're going to put it out there to sell to people?
Probably give away a few, but sell the rest of them, yeah.
Okay.
Awesome.
Well, let us know.
What's the scan time, the carve time for?
We're about halfway done with the design.
Yeah.
But it won't take, once we're done with the design, we can put it right into the machine. It is incredible. Her and her friends walk around the building, getting great ideas for the whole. Wait till you see, go to jail on ours. We have the police academy, we got everything in there. All the teachers are sending, you know what emojis are? See, like, the teachers are sending us their emojis and they're going around talking to them, and it's going to be really neat.
Awesome.
When you get done with that, you have to bring it up here so they can see it. That'd be really neat to see.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to introduce Megan Buerz. Don't boo her. Come on up, Megan. She's a senior in my program, and she was part of the competition last year. Tell them a little bit about yourself.
Well, hi, my name is Megan Buerz. I'm a senior at Corin High School. I've been in Fox's Precision Machining Program for the last two years. Last year in his class, I worked predominantly on manual mills, and that's what I did during his competition. In that competition, I got the opportunity to meet with a lot of different employers and talk with, and interview with a bunch of companies. I think I had seven or eight total companies reach out to me. I am officially employed at Richards Industries or Industrials tomorrow. I'm having a few, signing day, having a little bit of a, you know, celebration for me officially coming on full-time coming in May. Initially, what got me interested in machining was my stepdad and my grandpa. I've always loved working hands-on, and it just means a lot to me to continue this.
And Megan, you've made over $20,000 since you've been in my class.
I have.
It's one of those things, she's, actually, she started before co-op. She started going after school, then co-op kept, worked 40 hours during the summer, or all, every week 40 hours. And then she went into co-op, and she's been in co-op ever since. And tomorrow, I didn't know, I knew about your big signing day a long time ago, but they said for me to be quiet, then you knew about it. You have a big signing day, this celebration with your parents and stuff tomorrow.
Yeah, congratulations, Megan, yeah.
Thank you.
Where is the company that you're going to be working? Is it?
It's in Hyde Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Very cool. Well, congratulations.
They make valves mainly, right?
Yes.
Big valves, and they ship a lot of stuff over to China, so there's a company that's sending stuff back the other way. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, what is generally, when you've got a kid that's in your class and gets a job out there, what kind of money they make, say, in five years?
Five years, we're looking probably about $60,000, $70,000 a year. And most of these kids, I had a couple get into GE, and their grandma called me up and said, "Do you know he made $114,000 last year?" And I was like, "Ooh, he makes way more than I do." But yeah, I would say in five years, that's basically your college education, five years. And most kids are up around 70, 80, right off the bat. You throw that overtime in there, you're right up around 100. So it's real easy to make 100,000. Matter of fact, I just had two kids interview at Positrol, and the guy told them, he goes, "Everybody but five people in this company right now make over $100,000." And the kids got scared because, like, "Mr. Fox, this stuff looks really tough." And I said, "Well, you guys are up for the challenge. Take it on." So, but yeah.
And I think kids need to hear that. Look, this is what you can do. You don't have to go to college. You can go out, you could go to college and continue on. So, you know, at least the, that's my thing, is I want to give these kids options, you know, on jobs.
Absolutely. And I'd say 95% of the companies that hire from us will pay for your college. Her brother, when she said he got a full ride, that meant that that company paid for 100% of his education. By the way, he's a supervisor at Clifford Industries now. And yeah, the college thing, I always tell kids, I was not ready for college when I grad-- I took Precision Machining, I don't know if you guys know that, but I took it at Corin High School. And then later on in life, I had a boss say, "Hey, why don't you take this class?" So he started sending me back to one class at a time, and I passed. I wouldn't have passed right out of high school. I just wasn't, you know, and I think a lot of kids are like me. They want to work with their hands, and they're very capable of college, but they might need an extra five years to decide what they really want to do. And I'll tell you another thing, when I was on the job, I kept seeing these guys over here running them CNCs, and I kept saying, "How do I get to do that?" So I found a path I wanted to follow, and eventually you follow that path and might take some education and get there, but I think a lot of these kids are on the right way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I got to go to teacher classes, it's a nice state, so I.
Thank you, girls. Can we give them one round of applause?
Yeah!
All right, so we're going to move from that into an operations update, just to kind of give people a sense of some changes that might be coming. Amy's going to pull up a PowerPoint so we can kind of walk through that. It's kind of hard to follow kids because they're incredible. So, one of the things I want to just kind of share is that we, as a district, continue to look at a continuous improvement process, whether we are talking about academic improvement, behavioral improvement, culture and climate improvement. We are following that continual improvement process at the building level and the district level, and those intersect a lot. So when we're talking about the continual improvement process for behavior and discipline, we have three different routes we can take. One is a proactive route. When we talk about operations, student management, and discipline, we're talking about student movement throughout the building, expectations. We can proactively put things in place that operationalize our expectations into clear procedures so students know when we say that you need to be in line, that it means to be in this area that is quarantined off by ropes, by tape, whatever it is. So our buildings do a nice job of taking their expectations and procedurally putting them into operation. We have a reactive mode where when things occur, we have discipline that occurs. We have proportional discipline to what happens, and then we have our reinforcing model where we have PBIS, which is basically reinforcing students for doing the right thing on an ongoing basis. One of the things that we do is we continually review our operations. So at the end of last school year, when we looked at our continual improvement process, looking at data, we, in June, met as an administrative team, and we said, "One of the things that we can do to improve our data from last year into this year is to update our supervision plans. We can make sure that all of our staff have designated supervision during all of their unstructured times, that any time there's unstructured time throughout the day, arrival, dismissal, lunch, hallways, that we have clearly defined supervision plans in place." We actually added a couple of layers into this year where we met with our buildings and said, "Once you update your operational plan for this year, we're going to come in throughout the '23-'24 school year, bring a team, and we're going to review your operations and give you feedback." So we've been doing that throughout the year. We've worked on making sure that we have an administrator presence. We know that, you know, adult supervision is important. We knew that last year we had a lot of issues with buses and bus drivers who were saying they needed more support. So this year, we basically have a process in place where every single bus is boarded once a week by a dean or an administrator to basically reiterate the expectations for bus behavior, make sure that the students are following those before they leave the lot. We've had some buses where that helps. We've had some buses where there's more support needed. So we've actually had adults, deans of students, administrators, who have ridden specific buses because they needed some additional supervision and reinforcement of that expectation. And then obviously, our PBIS and our continuum of discipline support that we have in place with our ALP and some of the structures we have in the building that our buildings use. So this year, as we did our operation teams, they were customized. If we went to observe a lunch, we took Lisa Robeson, our food service supervisor, because we weren't just looking at the movement of students through the line and into the cafeteria, but we were watching the operations on the back end, in the kitchen, to make sure that there was efficiency, that things were happening the way they should. So we were really doing kind of that 360 observation of that and providing feedback. When we would meet with our buildings after we would do an operational review, we were able to share, "Hey, we saw this in your building. We saw this over here. Have you thought about something that looks like this?" Because we're seeing this here, and we're able to cross-pollinate some of those good ideas and really share that across our buildings in terms of what we're seeing as best practices. So those ongoing conversations were happening all fall as we took different teams to look at arrival, dismissal. A lot of times, when we were looking at some of those arrival and dismissal, we were taking our SROs with us as well to make sure that we had the right set of eyes looking at things. After the first semester, looking at our data specifically around altercations with physical altercations among students, we saw improvements in our buildings where some didn't see any improvement from last year to this year in terms of the decrease in the number of physical altercations they had, and some buildings that had a 60% improvement in the number of physical altercations that we were seeing. So we took some time to really dig into that data, look at where they were happening, what were some of those best practices. So as we've gone through and looked at our buildings, we've worked with all of our buildings to really kind of hone in on those evidence-based best practices. So one of the things that we've been able to do is go building by building and really share some of those things. One of the things that is most impactful is making sure that our staff have assigned locations. So if you kind of equate it to driving down the interstate, when you have a bunch of cars driving down the interstate and they're speeding, once they see a police officer parked in that median, everybody's brake lights come on. Kids are no different. When they're walking down the hallway, when they see an adult, it's that visual reminder to follow expectations. So we've made sure that in all of our buildings, there are clearly assigned locations. In some of our buildings, we've been able to identify whether it's in hallways, specific areas, specific times of the day, so they can really hone in and customize that supervision plan. We've really defined active supervision. It's not just being in a spot, but it's actively engaged with students, reinforcing verbal commands about what needs to happen. We've established clear procedures for student movement, so making sure that kids know. Every building is different. Some have stairways where this is your stairway to go up, this is your stairway to go down. So really clarifying some of those expectations and really procedurally operating those expectations. So we've talked a lot about taking expectations and operationalizing them into a clear procedure. So students don't just hear respect, they know that in order to show respect, I do X, Y, and Z. Really define that in a way that operationalizes it. There are some things that will probably be uncomfortable for students moving forward, and some things that parents might hear, and we want to make sure we communicate things like that. One of the things that may cause some conversation at home is a 10-10 rule. One of the things that we saw as an evidence-based best practice that was giving results in buildings is basically that once the class starts, the first 10 minutes of the class and the last 10 minutes of the class, nobody leaves. So their hallways are completely empty, there's no student movement. We know the first 10 minutes is clearly important for setting expectations in a classroom, making sure students understand the learning targets, making sure they know what they're learning that day and doing to make sure they learn that, and the last 10 is clarifying misconceptions and wrapping that up. It also keeps a lot of the movement out of the hallway. It's easy to sweep for a lot of the tardies for kids who may not be in the right location when that bell rings. So our buildings will be pushing that into effect. A lot of them already have it. Some of them are clarifying it and reinforcing it that that first 10 and last 10 students are not going to be allowed out of the classroom. We know emergencies happen. If there is an emergency, an adult will come and escort the child. We need kids in-class learning, not in the halls. So this is something that's going forward. We also, the buildings have specific lists that if there are students that have been in the hallway that should not be, that they're using their pass every bell to get out, they're in the hallway all the time. They may go beyond a 10-10 rule, and they might be in a situation where the only way they get out of a classroom is with an adult supervisor. So there are some clear guidelines that are being pushed out, some changes that are happening at our building that are clearly meant to take some of the evidence-based best practices that we are seeing that are actually shifting some of the data in our buildings and take that across the entire district. So there will be communication that will go out from each building. Some have already sent some out to their parents clarifying, moving forward, these are the expectations that we have, reinforcing the current expectations as well as clarifying some of the changes that are coming. Every building has specific things that they're doing that are across the board, a best practice, but customized to each building because of their bell schedule, because of their layout of their building and different things like that. But we wanted to at least set the tone that that was coming, why it was coming, and that don't be surprised if your kid comes home and says, "They wouldn't let me out of the classroom." You're right, because you need to be in the room, not in the hallway, and if they do have an emergency, there is a way for them to get their needs met. So our building principals are here tonight because they've been part of this conversation, and they are the ones who literally are going to be enforcing all of this moving forward. So we've been working to share that best practice across the district. Thanks.
Student achievement liaison report?
Well, shockingly, I don't have anything to report. I'm sure there's somebody doing something very good in all these schools, but at least we can celebrate Christina Carti and Megan Buerz for their fine work with the Precision Machining Program, and hopefully we'll have more information to give next time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Butler Tech?
Just wanted to thank Dave Foxe. Does a fantastic job, you know, with our kids and, you know, getting them prepared for when they get out of school to work and get out there in the, in the real world. He does a good job.
Thank you. Chris, any legislative update?
Nicole, nothing of any interest.
Reports from employees?
Nothing tonight.
No community comments?
All right, for the consent items, we'll start with personnel.
We seek approval for the following: three retirements, two resignations, seven initial appointments, three change in status, various supplemental items, and one job abandonment resolution.
We have one donation for your approval tonight. Emeritus Distributable Elementary for student incentives. We also have two vendor contracts. We have playground equipment for Houston Early Learning Center, which is funded by a grant, and we also have the Sinclair Community College CCP tuition prices for next year.
Then we also have our annual membership to the Ohio High School Athletic Association, so that is on there for approval as well. With that, the superintendent recommends the approval of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Motion, second. Motion, second. Any questions? I would ask, I know in the first semester, we had 25 buses canceled, but in January, we've had 22 already. Is that, are we trending towards every day having cancellations, or what's changed?
We are not. What we're hearing, and Tanya's here tonight, but I believe it's mostly illnesses that you're having right now with flu season and things like that. So we are seeing an uptick in the illnesses in the department, causing more of our daily cancellations, but it's--
Not enough to schedule cancellations.
It is not enough to schedule. And hopefully, it is short-term. We'll get people healthy and back to work.
Thank you. Any other questions? Passes five to zero. Thank you.
The next one is just for information only. Twice a year, we bring this to the board as just information. This is our semi-annual harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. These are the ones that are filled out by the form that parents have access to online and in their students' planners, and these are the formal complaints that are made, and this shows how many per building and how many were actually verified as a form of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. This does not, and I want to clarify, does not account for every incidence in our buildings. There's a lot of things that happen that our building administrators and our counselors take care of on a daily basis that may not make it onto this report. These are the ones that are officially reported by parents.
So this doesn't really show anything. Are we trending up or down compared to the past three to five years, or what percentage are we over/under previously?
It's pretty consistent from year to year. We can put together a multi-year analysis, but these are just the ones that are reported. So it kind of spikes in different places based on just the amount of parent reports that we get. We offer it to our parents every time they come in with, "Hey, we have an issue," but these are only the ones that are officially reported.
What is the process for verifying the allegations?
Our administrators, when they get a formal complaint, actually take it, and then they do a formal investigation, and then the parent gets a formal letter. Um, sim, twice a year, we bring this to the board as just information. This is our annual, semi-annual harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. These are the ones that are filled out by the form that parents have access to online and in their, um, students' planners. And these are the formal complaints that are made, and this shows how many per building and how many were actually verified as a form of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. This does not, and I wanna clarify, does not account for every incidence in our buildings. There's a lot of things that happen that our building administrators and our counselors take care of on a daily basis that may not make it onto this report. These are the ones that are officially reported by parents.
So, this doesn't really show anything. Are we trending up or down compared to the past three to five years? Or what percentage are we over, under previously?
It's pretty consistent from year to year. Um, we can put together a multi-year analysis, but these are just the ones that are reported. So, it kinda spikes, uh, in different places based on just the amount of parent reports that we get. We offer it to our parents every time they come in with, "Hey, we have an issue," but these are only the ones that are officially reported.
What is the process for verifying the allegations?
Our administrators, um, when they get a formal complaint, um, actually take it, and then they do a formal investigation, and then the parent gets a formal letter indicating whether or not it was verified as harassment, intimidation, and bullying, or whether it was not verified. And even things that are not verified are still addressed and dealt with, because there still might be something going on, but it doesn't reach that level of constituting HIB.
And what's some of the criteria for it to be validated?
So for harassment, intimidation, bullying, it has to be like pervasive, perv, um, severe, over time. So sometimes what we'll get is a single incident of a name call, but we can deal with, but it doesn't rise to the level of, um, ongoing harassment.
If a parent comes to the school and has a concern, um, if it's considered that, do they then fill out the form?
They can fill it out for any concern they have. Um, if they come to the administrator, a lot of times, they get it through phone calls and emails, and they deal with it. A lot of times, these get to ones that are ongoing. Um, so parents have said, you know, "This has been going on for a while," and that's what triggers something at this level. A lot of things are dealt with just through communication, conversation, and email that may not hit this form.
So are these higher than last year at this time?
Dustin, do you know if these are actually higher, or are they consistent?
They're, they're lower than last year.
Thank you.
Seems like parents' first step is social media.
We would prefer they use this form.
Exactly.
So I just have a couple of quick things for tonight. Um, one, I just want to acknowledge that this is School Counselor Appreciation Week, and our elementary counselors do a great job of working with students, running classes, um, really helping reinforce and teach a lot of those expectation conflict resolution skills. Our middle school counselors do a great job with that, really delving into some of those social issues with kids, some of the, um, conflict resolution, as well as thinking about career and college readiness and what their next steps are. And then our high school counselors do a phenomenal job of scheduling, dealing with all of the drama of adolescents, as well as helping students get their next step ironed out, whether it's getting into a Butler Tech program like Miss, Precision Machining, looking at colleges and selecting that, doing FAFSA's, um, or even just thinking about enlistment or employment. So, our counselors, district-wide, do an amazing job of supporting our students to make sure that they are ready for the academic environment and their next step when they leave us, and they just deserve that acknowledgement. So if you see a counselor this week, say thank you. And then, just a reminder that on Friday, February sixteenth, we do have a District End Service Day, so students would not be in session. And then Monday, um, the nineteenth, is President's Day and a Holiday. So just remind people of those days, they can plan accordingly.
Chris, any comments?
Nothing really for me tonight.
Yeah, I don't have anything either, Nicole.
I just think I need to get out and see Butler Tech every week. There's something great going on there, to get familiar with it.
I just wanna thank Christina and Megan for coming. I mean, it's, it's amazing how prepared these kids are when they come out of these programs, actually, while they're in the program. They make more money than I do in this program. Which is just fascinating opportunity, um, and Dave and, uh, Chris for leading these kids along. Like, I, I really feel like they really look out for them, like they're, they're children, so. And then, uh, thank you to all the counselors. I can't even imagine the lifts that they have day-to-day, every single day, so we definitely appreciate them.
I just wanna thank all the administrators and, um, staff that are here tonight, and thank you for continuing to make our schools a safe place for our kids, and I just appreciate everything you guys do, so, thank you.
All right. With that, we have a motion to move into executive session. The motion would be to, um, discuss the evaluation of superintendent. With that, I recommend the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
I'll move in second.
Pass this five to zero, and just a reminder that we will return from executive session uh, just to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.